Okay. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on February 14, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Can anyone actually record the meeting with this? We're trying out a different format this evening. It's the Zoom webinar. So it may look a little different. We're testing it out. We will still do public comments, so if members of the public are on, there will be an opportunity to be recognized and speak. Participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do we have a few sets? Are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 16, 2024.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And I move to approve the minutes dated January 23, 2024.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to approve the minutes dated January 26, 2024.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a common victory license submitted by Starbucks Coffee, number 79960, One Shipyard Drive, Hingham. We have, I think I saw Dan Brennan. Excellent, welcome.
Hi there, thank you. Sorry, I'm in a Starbucks cafe now.
That's perfect.
I'm sorry, say again?
Just saying that's perfect, that you're in the right location.
Yes.
Can you just explain the application?
Sure, it's a new Starbucks going in over where the Panera used to be in that space. It's been under construction for a couple months now. We're wrapping up final inspections. I think our final health inspection is scheduled for Monday, and we're hoping to open on Friday, the 23rd. We'll be open seven days a week, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We have 55 seats inside and 16 patio seats.
Excellent. And Tom, do you have any concerns? The application looks complete.
I don't. Everything looks good.
Okay. Any questions, Joe?
So I will tell you, when I first looked at the application, I thought it said 3,606 cups of coffee. That's the square footage, so I get it. My only question related to the 16 seasonal patio seats, is there any music? Is there any outside noise that's going to be generated, other than people talking and drinking coffee?
No, there won't be any background music.
Great.
Just on the interior.
Okay. No questions. I've reviewed the application, it looks complete. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Bill?
I have no questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? So I guess they would be able to raise their hand and then be called on, right? Michelle? Okay. Okay. I don't see anyone. Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the application for a common victory license submitted by Starbucks Coffee, number 79960, One Shipyard Drive, Hingham, with the following operating hours, Sunday through Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., subject to the approval of all necessary town departments.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Best of luck, thank you.
Thank you all so much, thank you.
Take care. Okay, next on the agenda is to sign the warrant for the presidential preference primary to be held on Tuesday, March 5, 2024. We have Town Clerk Carol Falvey with us.
Hi.
Either, you can come to the table.
Good evening, Carol Falvey, Town Clerk. So before you, you have the presidential warrant for the March 5 election. And this was provided, the format of it was provided by the Secretary of the Commonwealth, the Elections Division, and we have tweaked it for Hingham, including our 7 plus 7A, our eight precincts, and the polling locations. It's pretty straightforward. They need to have this served upon me by February, I think it's 27th. And so we have plenty of time to do that. If you're interested, we've sent out over 3,100 vote by mail ballots in the past week, and we probably have another 4 to 450 to send out, which will go out this week, by Friday. So we're been very busy downstairs.
Yes, I know you have been. So how many, do you have any guess of how many people will actually be at the polls?
So so far, and with what we have to date, and we will still get them, we'll still get requests, we're probably looking at about 20 to 23% will vote by mail.
Okay.
Looking at past elections, you know, I would expect we will have a good turnout, but I think that this is not going to compare to the 2020 presidential primary, because you had two races then, in 2020, that were very active. And these are less active.
Yes.
I would say the biggest contest we'll have on our Hingham ballot will be the two, we have two slates of Republican town committees.
Okay.
We have, which is something new.
New, yeah.
So that will bring out a lot of voters, I hope.
Good, excellent. And remind me, did the hours, the voting hours change?
So this, all state elections are 7:00 a.m.
Okay.
To 8:00 p.m. Our local election is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
By our town bylaw.
Okay, excellent. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, in what order will the names appear for the presidential preference?
They were randomly selected. I actually have specimens downstairs of the ballots, but they were, they were selected by Secretary Galvin.
Okay, so it's a state.
So it has nothing to do with us.
No other questions, I'm ready to proceed.
Okay, Bill?
No questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
So I'd like to make a motion to sign the warrant for the presidential preference primary to be held on Tuesday, March 5, 2024.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work. Happy Valentine's Day. Good luck.
Take care, thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion, Article H, Disbursement of Electric Lighting Department Receipts.
Tris, I'll turn myself on. So I can take this one. So this is an annual, an annual article. We do it a little bit backwards. Instead of billing the HMLP for the amount of the payment in lieu of taxes that we, that we, the money that we receive from HMLP, we simply transfer that much less and hold on to, hold on to the amount of the pilot. So that's what this article is designed to do. We don't have that amount yet. We'll have that a little bit later in the year, which is why the article doesn't mention it.
The pilot amount, you mean?
The pilot amount, yes.
Okay. And that is typically in the comment, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, and it will be in the motion.
And will be in the motion. Okay. Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Bill?
No, we do this every year.
Every year, yeah.
No question.
Okay. Yes, and it's typically between $450,000 and $500,000, right, for that pilot amount? Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable article on Article H.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That passes unanimously. Next, I'm going to move to Article FF, Expand the Size of the Development and Industrial Commission.
Sure, so this is a conversation we've been having with the HDIC. We've been working with them to come up with a new, a new charge, something that will provide the town and our office, frankly, some much-needed research and work from, from that group. And to that end, depending on how that plays out with the committee, we thought it would be helpful if the Select Board simply had the authority to set the size of that committee, depending on the work that was needed to be done at any given time. So right now, they're set statutorily at no more than seven, but if you could, if this article would allow this, the Select Board to set that committee at no more than 15 and no less than five. And that flexibility, I think, will be coming very handy with the work that needs to be done from them, so.
And that flexibility is consistent with the state statute?
It is.
Okay.
Yep, and we've asked the committee if this is, would be welcome, and they have said it would be.
Yes, I think this actually was proposed by the former Chair, and it, it makes a lot of sense to me for us to have that flexibility. We're obviously not required to increase the size, but given our focus on economic development and how much work is in front of us, I think it does make a lot of sense.
Exactly.
Joe, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm familiar with this.
Bill?
I have no question, but I did want to take a moment to thank Mike Kranzly for his many years of service on the HDIC. Mike recently stepped down as the Chair of the Committee and just wanted to note and appreciate all of the passion and energy he brought to this effort. So thank you, Mike, and happy to support the article.
Excellent, yes, thank you, Mike. Through his tremendous leadership, the HDIC is in a very good spot to move forward, so we are appreciative of all the efforts. Right, are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
So I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article FF.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. All right, we are going to move on to the next agenda item, Town Administrator FY25, Municipal Budget Recommendations. Tom?
Great, thank you. So I'll start off with a statement in general, and then I'll kind of, we have some slides showing what we've done. I'm going to highlight some of the larger items, and then we'll, if you guys have questions, we can get into it, but this is a preliminary discussion. I expect this discussion will evolve over the coming two or three weeks before you're all ready for a final vote. But again, preliminary presentation so that we can start the work. Now, I've said this at the outset to this, to this year's budget cycle, for 400 years, Hingham has budgeted based on available revenue. This year, we're budgeting based on available revenue and a self-imposed expenditure cap, which is the first, and it's great, but it comes with its own process that's going to be required in order to properly set the, you know, set the operating budget for the, for the entirety of the town. So to that end, I think you'll see a little bit of a different process this year as we go through this. I'll note that after the municipal budgets had been presented to you by all of the department heads, their total amount of their request was $36,314,311. It, the exist, the, that's over our 3.5% cap. Our 3.5% cap is $35,947,182. That's a difference of $367,129. That's the amount that I had to trim from the, from the department head requests, so that's what you're about to see. I've done it in a couple of different ways. I've done it through reductions, but I've also reallocated budget, because again, we're not simply able to fund additional requests that we feel are appropriate just because there was revenue available. I have to, I have to do it within the 3.5% restrictions that we have on ourselves now.
Can I just, just a clarification? So the 36, 314, 311, that was level services plus the additional requests presented by the department heads, or just level services?
Just level services.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But the number, the number I brought the budget to is that number. It is the, it's zero balanced, fully compliant with the MOU number.
Yes, understood.
Okay, so we'll start with some of the reductions. There's, and Michelle has these slides here. I'm going to call out the ones that I think are most interesting or most important, but again, to the extent you have questions this week, or next week, or the following week, or whenever we discuss this, feel free to, feel free to bring them up. So the first, the first that I would call out is the Community Planning Department. This is a shifting of funds, so part of the process that I'm trying to follow here is allocating funds from different resources in the best way possible and maximum impact. So in this case, the administrative assistant role within the Community Planning Department had always simply been, not simply, but had always been administering support solely to the Community Planning Department. What I'm recommending to you is that that person also support the CPC and through their administrative function. So the CPC allows an amount of money out of their annual allocation to be, to fund administrative support. So I'm recommending we use $25,000 from the CPC administrative allocation on this, on this position annually, so that, that frees up $25,000 in our budget, because that's now not being used from the general fund. So that money has been taken outside of the 3.5% cap. So that feeds back into a, I'm going to tie it together here, now I'm going to jump ahead a little bit because I have to, but we're going to take that $25,000 and allocate it to the Conservation Department eventually, when I get through, when you'll see it come up on the screen in a minute. And that will, that $25,000 will augment the Assistant Conservation Officer bringing them up to, or helping to bring them up to a full-time position. So I'm just kind of shifting, using some CPC funds to make that entirety of that office function at the highest level possible.
Can I just ask a question about that? So the CPC admin, if I remember correctly, it was $40,000.
Right.
Right? So are there other expenses?
There were.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
The other one I'd call, or another one that I would call out for, for reductions was the $24,918 from the Shrek. This is the dispatch service. They, that's a fair amount, so I just want to call it out. We had budgeted at 5% increase, and it came in, as we did that process, it came in, still preliminarily, the budget won't be voted by the Shrek Board until next week, but preliminarily, the number's looking like it's this new 1114 number, which is 24, $25,000 lower than what we had originally projected.
Okay.
Another one I'd call out is Elections. That's $18,000. Carol has just left, but she was able to secure some state grants to fund a couple of functions within her office, so we were able to reduce the budget by that amount, which is excellent. Again, other people's money from the state.
Are those grants ongoing or just one time?
Do you know, I think they're ongoing.
We've gotten them in the past. I mean, I don't know to what extent the state guarantees, you know, that they'll always be there. But we have gotten them in the past.
Got it, okay.
Next, I'll highlight some, some of the fire expenses. There's about $35,000 in fire department expenses that are coming off some of that. $20,000 of it is a new scheduling tool that the chief was hoping to get his hands on, but again, there's some sacrifices needed to make, and he was willing to forego that scheduling tool for this year. And then there was some, we worked around some of the contractual stipends and allocated money a little bit differently there. The next one I would note is, this is a big number, $105,000 from the Harbor Master. What we're doing here is we're going to, for the first time ever, we're going to use the Water Waste Fund to pay for a salary. It's allowed, we've just never done it. What traditionally we've said is, we're not going to touch the Water Waste Fund, and we're going to build that fund up to help us pay for the once-a-decade dredging that needs to happen. In my opinion, that, we're going to use a bunch of that Water Waste Fund this year, about a half million dollars, there's about a million dollars in there now. We're going to use about a half million of it this year for capital efforts, which is the design and the permitting costs for the dredging that will happen eight years from now. But believe it or not, the permitting process with the state takes six years. So we have to get the design done now so we can file with the state timely and be ready to go in eight years. But the, that, according to the Harbor Master, that's going to be the last capital need he needs out of that, out of that fund for upwards of five more years. So that, when we get the money that goes into that fund every year from the, from the mooring fees, that will continue to grow over time. So we're not in risk of diminishing that account to a dangerous level. And if we're paying for Ken's, the Harbor Master's salary out of it, it's appropriately, perfectly appropriate and allowable use, that account will still grow, we'll still have our calculations preliminarily showing about a million five that we'll be able to use to offset dredging, but a million five or 2 million, to me, that money is better spent over the course of the next eight years, impacting annually our budget, rather than an extra $500,000 that we would not have to borrow in eight years. Borrowing 8 million or 8.5 million, I think the impact is more, is better felt on an annual basis in the budget. So I'm recommending we use waterways that way this year.
By, by how much does that fund typically grow each year?
300,000.
Okay.
Which is, that's, that's exactly the question, Joe. I'm sorry, I should have said that, but that's why I'm not real worried about that.
Okay, that's, got it, okay.
The next one I'd call out is the Police Department. We are eliminating an unfilled records clerk position. That position's gone unfilled for a couple of years. It was something that had, it used to be used, and the person that was in the, in the position for several years actually went through academy and became a police officer, and he's doing fantastic, we're proud to have him, but it just never got backfilled, and I'm not sure that it was overly necessary. The chief agreed that it was a, it was a position that could be cut without too much pain.
Okay.
So we reduced it. Next is the Public, the Public Works. This one is tough. This is, the total on the Public Works reduction is $217,000. That is between, it's three positions we're reducing that by, as well as a few other things, but mainly positions. It's the two positions from the Tree and Park Division, as well as one from the transfer station. There will be service impacts, but I believe we've had so many vacancies in that department for so long that the, they had nine vacancies at one point last year. They've already been able to fill, I think, three or four of those nine vacancies. With removal of these three positions from that total, from that department, I think those, four new fill, four new positions being filled, plus I think we're likely to get two or three more in the near future, I think that that, those new employees will be able to offset the, the loss of the cost, of the cost, the value of those vacancies that we're cutting out of the budget. He was using that money to pay for backfilling the role that otherwise would have been done through overtime, so now I think with the additional five or six positions getting filled, I think we're not going to have to have that, those positions. So I'm comfortable with removing these from the budget. I spoke, I've spoken with Randy, he's a little bit concerned about the service impacts, but I talked to him again this morning, and he said, yeah, the reality is that if we're able to fill those other vacancies, the money from these three cuts will be less, the loss will be less impactful if we're able to fill those other positions. So I think that that's accurate, and we've been very successful in the last couple of months in filling those vacancies. So settling that contract helped with DPW last year, so that was a big step in that, so comfortable moving forward on that one. Okay. I think that's all I wanted to talk about for cuts. Again, there's others, cuts in there, I did, I glossed over a few, if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions, Bill, before we move on?
So just the part-time admin position that was brought up, are they going to help HTC, the Historic District Commission, as well?
Yes.
Okay, so they would do double duty?
That's exactly right.
Okay, I know Andrea asked for that help. Okay, great.
And I've even spoken with Shannon Palmer, our new Conservation Agent, and she agrees that between Sylvia Schuler, the admin for Conservation, and the now vacant, soon-to-be-filled admin position in Community Planning, it's all one suite of offices. The two admins will work to support the three offices, Historic, Community Planning, and Conservation.
Great.
So I think we've got it covered, yeah. By the way, Shannon's awesome, if I haven't said that. She's new and she's terrific.
Joe?
So in Select Board, are you going to eliminate one of the three positions of Select Board?
Well, you guys were chiefs, so.
Chief money.
That's double our salary.
Okay.
What you need is an agent.
No questions.
All right, let's keep moving.
All right, so the next section I'm referring to is reallocations. Originally, it was additions, but again, I'm kind of taking some money from different funds, I'm reducing some places, I'm reallocating, because we, we're simply not just funding new, new requests this year because of available revenue. I only have X number of dollars, and I need to allocate it in the best way possible. So we're referring to this as reallocations. There's only two that I was going to call out as significant. The first is the Building Department, which is why we skipped over Article I temporarily. What we're doing here is we are decreasing, it's a little odd to think of a decrease being an addition, but we're decreasing the use of the revolving fund by $50,000, which puts the burden of that $50,000 back on the general fund. So we have to do that, and Michelle will go through some slides when we get to that article, but we were, we had been using, we're paying part of the building commissioner and the two admin, in addition to all of the inspectors, out of that revolving fund. And frankly, we got a little punch drunk, I think, we started using it too much, and it's gone too low. We would be projected only at $25,000 in that, in that account now. While we want to use our revolving funds, we don't want to deplete them to zero, and that was what was happening. So we're going to use it, $50,000 less next year, and that'll leave us with a balance of 75. We think we'll have to do this again the following year to get the balance to a comfortable level of, you know, $100,000 or so. It used to be a million. So to put in perspective, $25,000 is really low. Scarily low, so we need to fix that. And then the only other reallocation I'd speak to is the Conservation Department, which I already explained. So the rest of these are pretty, pretty small, I think. Elder Services, where, where I'm proposing to fund an additional request for some admin work down there. We cut $6,000 from her budget on the other page, I'm adding, you know, $15,000 here. This is the kind of reallocation effort that I'm talking about. So any questions on reallocations?
Joe?
No.
Bill?
No, on both pages or the first or fifth?
Both pages.
Okay. On the Health?
Yep.
Is the social worker also going to, going to be the opioid coordinator?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, because I don't think that opioid coordinator position has, I don't think we've given out any money of the opioid money.
Not yet. We, we, she, the new, the social worker just started, what, three weeks ago, something like that.
Yeah, we have that on an upcoming agenda to discuss.
That's right, yeah, but you're absolutely right, Bill, and that is a priority. I've spoken with her, she knows this, so, yeah.
Great. We were kind of stuck until the state just changed the process in December, so we'll be coming to you guys shortly to ask for your votes so that we can get that going.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So you've got a total of 149?
Oh, sorry. Wrapping it all together, so, so the budget gap to close was $367,000. sixty-seven thousand dollars. I've reduced a total of five hundred and thirteen thousand from the departmental requests. I've reallocated another one hundred and forty-nine thousand with Article Four net change of thirty-four hundred. That's the, that's the, how do you explain Article Four? Article Four.
Article Four is, it's part of the municipal budget, so it is part of our three and a half percent cap. It's typically like the COLA, the budget for the COLA and other adjustments for contractual.
Yeah, it's the contractual, the anticipated contractual adjustments to salaries, I guess.
Yeah, so for any position or vacancy that we take out of there, that has an impact on, you know, what would have been the COLA associated with that position.
Right.
So that's why it's coming down.
And now, so I'm able to show you a balanced budget. So again, this is flexible, we can move on this. I'll note that, one other thing I didn't note was that the, I spoke with Linda Harper tonight, they're going to reduce the, they're able to reduce the operations over at the library by a little less than ten thousand dollars, which is very helpful. And again, that reallocation allowed us to lessen the impact at the DPW. So again, teamwork across the board, all the department heads have been terrific to work with and very respectful. So I've told them all, this is preliminary and subject to change, of course, at your whim, so.
And that library number is reflected in the ten thousand amount?
It is, yes.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay.
That's a little bit high, we had printed this set before, I had my four o'clock call with Linda, but it's the ninety-six.
Right, right, okay.
Excellent, any questions?
No further questions.
Questions?
No, not yet.
Well, thank you, Tom, Michelle, Art, and all the department heads, certainly a tremendous amount of work went into this. We appreciate the commitment to the MOU and the three and a half percent, as well as the creativity with the reallocations. I think that's a good exercise to go through to make sure we are optimizing, maximizing every dollar and not just assuming level services means everything from last year because we're evolving and our needs are changing, so, so thank you. I think this is a great start. Certainly, we have a lot to think about and dig into, which we will do over the next several weeks, so there will be many more conversations. I do want to give members of the public a chance to speak. I'm going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes each, but I do want to hear what you have to say, and certainly, for people that aren't on this evening or don't get to speak tonight, feel free to reach out to us, email us, we want to hear what your priorities are as we move through this process.
And before we do, can I ask just two questions? Two quick questions. So I was not counting last year, you know, it's, you've done a great job getting this to three point five. What has the municipal side budget normally grown at? Again, not last year, because that was an override year, over the two and a half. Are you able, is it usually? It's usually three to three and a half.
Yeah, we've seen three-four, three-seven, we've seen it in that ballpark, yeah.
Between three-four to four?
Yeah, yeah, it's somewhere in there, yeah.
Okay, all right. And secondly, anticipating some questions, the sustainability coordinator will be fully funded, full-time position.
So I'd not reduced it from Tom Mayo, the department head, to Tom Mayo, the administrator, it's still fully funded at seventy-four thousand dollars, which is step three of our grade-eight structure. And again, I mentioned this to Laura Burns at the AdCom, she asked if we find a great qualified candidate that we want to hire, and there, we need to move that, which often happens during negotiations.
We could do that, but we have to get permission from the personnel board.
That's exactly right. We could move them to step six, step six in that grade, which I believe is eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And that would, that's a regular process.
Well, I know, I appreciate you funding that at the full time, love it, thank you. Okay, great, that's all I have to say.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have anyone with a question?
It was a hand raised, but now it's dropped, but I don't, if anyone.
Do any members of the public have a question or comment related to the budget? Okay, I don't see any. Again, feel free to reach out to us after the meeting. Excellent, thank you, great presentation, thank you. Okay, let's go back to the building department revolving fund.
Sure, so this is, I'm just going to throw these up, this is a perennial article. Every year, town meeting needs to set the cap under which we have, we can't spend more than X amount from the building revolving fund. As Tom explained, we, so what this chart shows you very briefly is, the black bar represents the balance of the building revolving fund over time, like Tom mentioned, it had been growing and growing. Several years ago, the town, we started using it much more aggressively to take some pressure off the general fund budget, but now we have to slow our roll per se because we don't want to totally deplete those funds. So what we're recommending doing is, as you mentioned, allocating fifty thousand dollars more to the general fund budget to try to close the gap a little bit between the revenues coming in, which are falling short right now, the expenditures going out. So we're proposing to do that over FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, and we're asking as part of your vote tonight to support the article to also recommend setting a lower cap for FY twenty-five of two hundred and eighty thousand, not the usual three hundred and fifty thousand, so that we can kind of start that process of maintaining some smaller but reasonable reserve for the fund.
Okay.
We're really weaning ourselves off of it, that's very much what we're doing. We overuse, now it's time to wean ourselves off.
Right, so as we kind of wean ourselves off of this, what are the impacts? Is it that the salary for the building commissioner, as an example, will move back completely to the general fund or the overall budget?
What we're proposing, so right now, in twenty-five, the estimated gap is just about a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars, so we're kind of saying, put half of that back, the fifty thousand in twenty-five, and then the other half in twenty-six, and we're taking that from the building commissioner and the two admins, who right now, fifty percent of their salaries go to the revolving fund. We're saying that only twenty percent of their salaries would, but that a hundred percent of the inspectors that work on the gas plumbing and electrical things still remain fully funded by the revolving fund.
Okay.
So it won't necessarily come from one, any one location, it'll just be the fifty thousand dollars that we need.
Yeah, so in FY twenty-six, we'll reevaluate, as you may recall, town meeting increased the fees for the gas plumbing and electrical permits, we've made some assumptions about that in here, but by the time we get to do the FY twenty-six budget, we'll have several months of revenue data under our belts, and maybe that number will also be helping as well.
Okay. Okay, Joe, any questions?
Yeah, so is there a stated purpose for the building revolving fund? When it's established, was it to be used only for particular purposes?
I'd have to look up the original language, but it's credited with all the fees from the electrical, plumbing, and gas inspections, and I've understood it to be only used, able to be used for things related to those inspections and that work.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are properly using the fund in accordance with its established purpose.
Yes.
So it really should be aligned with paying the inspectors.
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, I think what happened here probably was during COVID, growth came to a complete stop.
Exactly.
And then interest rates are so high right now that growth is going slow, er, than anticipated in the past, so that fund has been diminished so much over time. And then our large municipal project, we waive fees on that, but we don't want to tax ourselves.
Billions of dollars.
We don't want to tax ourselves, right, so we waive the fees, but I'm happy to say that I have contributed to this fund.
But you're right, Bill, you can see.
So somewhere in that chart, Michelle Ramsey family is.
You can see in FY eighteen and nineteen and then twenty that the green bars do drop, probably because of COVID.
Yeah.
That the green is the revenue, and it's kind of slowly coming back up, but it really changed.
Yeah, but the interest rates are so high right now that it's slowing it, yeah. Okay, it makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks for doing this.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the town limit the total amount that may be spent from the building department revolving fund to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars during fiscal year twenty-five, and to recommend favorable action on this Article I.
Second.
Roll call, vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent, thank you. Okay, so I think that's all the articles for tonight. All right, next is to consider submission of applications to Plymouth County for sub-awards of American Rescue Plan Act grants.
Sure, so the board may recall taking a similar vote last March to spend some of our ARPA allocation on the Route 3A sewer project, Stormwater Project, and a COVID-19 testing center. So we're asking for your support tonight on three additional uses that we've talked about, including the MWA regional water study that's working on with several other communities on the South Shore, creation of an economic development plan for the town, and on FFNE costs for the public safety facility. Plymouth County is asking us to report to them by March first on how we're going to spend the money, and they're also considering any funds that communities aren't going to spend by then that they might reallocate to the other member communities. So I think it's best just to come forward with a plan that says we're spending every penny, and I'd like to submit a request for additional funds for the public safety facility, maybe the sewer project, with your support because it doesn't hurt to try to capture some more of those resources to the extent they're available.
Great, Bill?
No, great, thank you. Yeah, thanks for staying on this, we want to spend every dollar of it.
Yep.
Joe?
So my understanding is that we are submitting both for funds that we know are available as well as for funds that may or may not be available, but let's put in our request anyway.
That's right.
Got it. And I've reviewed this, I think this is appropriate.
Excellent, yes, thank you, Michelle.
Can I just make one note?
Yeah, sure.
The four hundred thousand dollars we're allocating for the public safety facility will be for the public safety facility in general, not necessarily just for the FFNE. Hopefully, it will be FFNE, but to the extent we need it for something structural, then it will be made available for that as well. I just didn't want, I wanted to be clear.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And again, these uses are all uses that have been approved by Plymouth County for purposes of these funds.
Yes, the only one that we haven't talked to them yet is the economic development plan, that's relatively new, but that's in the public sector revenue loss category, which is very flexible, it's basically for any governmental services, but I will run that by the county treasurer as I have all the other ones before we submit.
Excellent.
Got it.
Are there other projects that were on the list that, you know, you weren't able to prioritize, or kind of can you just walk us through that process, how these three bubbled to the top?
So I think what we first did was look at the other ARPA categories as the more restrictive, and that's typically like the water, sewer, broadband, we really don't have any broadband projects here, and that bottom category, the full, like, most of the balance, as you know, is going to the Route 3A sewer project just because that's a large request, there's a warrant article associated with that this year that would be coming before you guys in a few weeks. And so just kind of looking at reducing the repair impact there, the category above, this was helpful, it's more flexible, the biggest piece of the public sector revenue loss was to close the budget gap last year, but as some of these public safety costs have become known, we thought this was a source we could tap into, and then as this idea for an economic development plan has kind of taken more shape, it was helpful to be able to have a flexible pot of funds we could go to to hopefully get that work started.
Excellent, yeah, I think that's a great idea, I love that the economic development plan is on there, so yes, thank you for maximizing every dollar and all of your efforts and staying on top of it, I know it's a lot of work.
And sorry, one last piece that I forgot to mention was the, obviously, the MWA study that Art's working on, there's six or seven different communities as part of that, all planning to use, for the most part, ARPA funds to make that happen, so that one fit in the, in the second budget, which is, or bucket, which is helpful.
Right, and it's my understanding that that's our share, the Hingham share, right? So, and hopefully, if everyone applies as kind of a regional group, that might have more weight in getting that funding, I would think.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be fine for our share of it.
Okay.
I think there was one community that wasn't part of the same county, so we couldn't apply for like a fully regional project, but this funding in general is helpful, I would encourage the federal government to make more available to us and kind of say, these are the buckets, you know, tell us the uses, but it's, so far, it's come with less strings attached and kind of less of a difficult process, and Plymouth County's been pretty helpful in making it available to us.
Excellent, yes, they've certainly been good partners.
And I assume there was no category to improve cell phone service and testing?
There was not.
It's not exactly broadband.
Okay.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
So I would move to authorize the town administrator to execute and submit grant applications and all associated documents to Plymouth County for sub-awards of American Rescue Plan Act grants, for a regional NWRA water study, for costs associated with the new public safety facility, and for an economic development plan.
Second.
Roll call, vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Excellent.